Where is Falls Church Public School Board's convening present? Now, the motion to 22-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Mr. Castillo, Mr. Chaney, Ms. Highland, Ms. Carney, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Rastnik, and Mr. Sharp. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it honorable for its standing on the nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the caution given, is there a motion for the agenda? I am very much all in favor of this day. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, have a comments or questions?
We do not.
We do not? There's no votes?
No ma'am.
Are there questions in reports? Do we have how many of those this evening? The next item is a consent agenda.
Very good. Under personnel retirements, Adele Esken, librarian, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective no later than June 30th, 2013, and Kenneth Seigman, assistant principal, George Mason, effective no later than June 30th, 2013, that the board approve a leave of absence for a teacher at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, effective April 29th, 2013 through June 17th, 2013, and for a paraprofessional at Mary Ellen Henderson, effective April the 1st, 2013, through the remainder of the 2012-2013 school year. Non-reappointments, that the board, non-reappoint, Courtney Carl, sixth grade science social studies teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective the end of the 2012-2013 school year, and Jessica Sadek, special education paraprofessional, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective at the end of the 2013 school year. Extra pay for extra duty assignments that the board approve the following EPED assignments: one instructional leadership EPD assignment, Mary Ellen Henderson, for the remainder of the 2013 school year; twenty-two athletic EPED assignments, George Mason, for the 2013 spring season; and five extracurricular EPED assignments, Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, for the 2013 spring season.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Just for the community's knowledge, we did have a work session on facilities before this meeting tonight where we talked in depth about the progress and status of the TJ project and about Phase Two. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent, Dr. Jones, to give us a brief summary, and then we'll take questions from the board.
As you know, we're in the middle of Task One right now, and we are completing, putting Task Two together. Task Two work will start, if it is approved tonight, we'll be on it tomorrow, and it will be the work that will continue through the summer, and this is the renovation aspect at TJ, and it will also carry on through September and probably not finish quite until October for Task Two, which was always the planned schedule for renovations. Two of the main areas that are being renovated, as you come in TJ, the main entrance as well as the media center, is being expanded by a thousand square feet and having a redesign there. Another aspect that we ensured the community we would do in the older section of TJ was to make sure that the sprinkler system was installed, new fire suppression, intercom, a lot of features that just make the building safer, and as well as we're getting a bonus roof, which we're really excited about that, and a couple of other items, as well as things like new stair treads that will lead into the new section. So we're very excited to start the work, and if we have your approval, we'll be working tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. Are there any comments or questions on this end? Mr. Sharp.
To indulge a couple of minutes of praise for this project. The project, one might say, began three years ago, but I'd say it began somewhat before that. Back when we were talking about what this Falls Church need as a new school before Mary Ellen Henderson was built, the board and the community discussed an option to build an elementary school, because we thought that growth was rapid at that point, but some citizens convinced us that that, that there was even more rapid growth in the middle school area, and that there was a better place to build than where we initially thought we should build. So the discussion at that point was to build a middle school, and we engaged in a process new to this community, new to Virginia, called the Private Public Educational Facilities Act process, a design-build process which was successful in many other areas of the country at saving costs and still allowing for good community control of the design and construction. And we were the first in Virginia to take advantage of the new act even before the regulations had been finalized. We were often running with a plan to use the PPEA to get Mary Ellen Henderson done, and it was done on time and under budget. And we're very fortunate that we have been able to build upon that experience in this project by, well, in one sense, going out and finding another innovation. And there were members of this board, and I hope people won't be too upset with me if I just name one of them who isn't here but was prominent in getting us to follow through on that innovation, and that was Joan Wadiska, who was a leader of the board for some time and is now a leader of, is at least a member of the Board of Education for the State of Virginia. There was an opportunity to apply for a low-interest, actually no-interest loan because of the stimulus program that the federal government had put together and was allocated to the state, and it appeared that some communities would get the funding, some would not, and we were one of the fortunate ones, because we had good community support, city council, planning commission. At that time, there was a long-range financial planning group for the city. All those groups were unanimous in their support. It did have to stay within a certain parameter of financing to be recognized as something the city could afford under what were considered to be very constrained economic circumstances of that particular day. And all of those cylinders clicked, and we have a project that is up out of the ground on one end of the TJ building as we speak tonight, and is also, the documents that we have before us tonight show the preparation for renovating the rest of TJ, and even to a much greater extent than we thought we could at the point where we entered into that grant application and put out the planning documents that we were able to muster at that point in time. The earlier planning documents were indicating that we could only do sprinkling, that's a fire sprinkler type system, okay, and renovate the gym and expand the cafeteria and also the media center to sort of be right-sized so that when the entire building was expanded to include another grade, those common areas would also be of adequate capacity to take on that additional number of students and staff. And tonight, we see that at six, at what Bob tells us is 65 percent of the design process, we have a lot of extras that are going into this additional facility. We'll have a renovation of the lower level of the building so that it's more accommodating for special education and for music. We'll have a different intercom system throughout the area. We'll have replaced a great many of the windows, not all of them, but a great many that are just not serviceable anymore. We'll also be replacing the roof. And we had some ideas that we could do some additional work, some is still a bit up in the air, if you will, and that one that I'm talking about up in the air, it's actually the ceiling. The ceiling isn't quite ready yet to be defined as to what we can do there, and I would ask as we get more detail, particularly on major components like that, if we could have a written report come back to us from Bob and those who are working on this, Bob Jones, I should say. And I think this represents a tremendous, tremendous victory for Falls Church and for the citizens, for the city council, for all those who supported this endeavor, and I think it's going to, well, I think it will serve us well for many years. We think we may fill the building at the moment that it's able to open the new doors, but at the same time, we will have a total of 18 new instructional spaces, 14 of them the regular classroom size, a new science lab, and then three that are special educational size. So I'm sorry to take a few minutes here to tout this project, but I think it's just been an outstanding example of what can happen if people put their minds to it, put their backs to it, and I just want to congratulate everyone who was a part of it, thank particularly those leaders who saw fit to put extra effort into this. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anyone down this end? No, Ms. Curtin, do you have any comments on this topic? Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no other conversation or questions, then I think we're ready to call a vote on this motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Didn't we do that before we had the conversation?
No, we had a conversation first.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. But I will do. I move that the school board approve the completion of Task Two project for TJ.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, very good. Thank you very much, Dr. Jones, for your work on that, and in particular, thank you very much for having both a tree and a castle theme in the library. I think that's so cool. We'll take this home and show Caitlin, and she's going to think it's so cool. And that was her favorite place at TJ, was the library when she was there. All right. Next, we have first reading of policy 4.8.1, which is the policy that the board has been talking about for a good part of this year regarding the management of our fund balance and our contingency. And so, Dr. Jones, I'll ask you to give an overview for the community. This school board has had several conversations about this, both in work session and on the dais.
The fund balance policy was put together looking at policies really from all around the country, looking at what school divisions, how school divisions set up a fund balance policy. Ours is a little bit different because of the city charter, and what you're looking at tonight is that at the close of the year, the money that would be considered fund balance would actually help fund our contingency. And so the contingency, as you know, going into the budget, is what really helps us at the beginning of the school year, especially when we have to come to the school board and we need those extra two teachers or extra three teachers, which we experienced this year at the beginning of the year, and we're highly likely to with our growth over the next couple of years. And the way that this policy is written is it's not to, the contingency would be not to exceed 2 percent of the ensuing year's budget without the contingency amount included in the calculation. So just to give an example with our budget size right now, it's just over $700,000 that we would be allowed to have a contingency. If there was anything above or beyond that, then that money could be spent on capital projects currently approved but not funded in the CIP, which usually we do have, you know, items in the CIP that are not funded, immediate one-time needs of nonrecurring nature. And I will say, what you see in blue, everything is in red, was the original policy, the blue changes were actually changes recommended by John Foster, you know, our attorney with the city and schools, and he actually encouraged us to add number three, which was operational needs, so that if we did have large growth with our enrollment, that we could have also that in there as well.
All right. Thank you very much. This time, shall we have a motion first and then have discussion?
I move that the school board approve first reading of policies 4.8.1 fund balance action.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right. Now, are there any comments or questions? No? No? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
I also want to thank our leader of the moment, Susan Carney, who has put a lot of effort into helping us get better clarity on this policy, but on other places where we seem to have a lack of clarity in how we're supposed to fund things that are near capital, if not entirely capital, things, and these financial processes that we need to be able to define carefully and then follow are very, very important, and Susan's put a lot of effort into this, is continuing to do so, and I congratulate her effort in bringing this to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I am going to make one comment for the board's knowledge and the community's knowledge about this before we take the vote, and that is, as you know, we've been having conversations with our colleagues on city council, specifically those in the Gang of Eight meetings, about this interim kind of spending for items like buses and technology and other things that are semi-durables. They won't fit in the CIP because they cost less than $150,000, and they don't have a long enough lifespan, but yet they're not operational items that we need from year to year. After the last Gang of Eight meeting, we were given the impression that the new capital reserve that was set up by the city council was a place where we could go for funds for these items. I did get some clarification after some email back and forth from Wyatt Shields just a couple days ago, that that is not, in fact, the purpose of that capital reserve, that that capital reserve's purpose is to either pay down bonded items or other items that are already in the CIP. And his suggestion after some more back and forth about, well, what about this mid-range, you know, kind of thing, was that the school board find a way to incorporate that in its operating budget, you know, perhaps setting aside money each year somehow to save for those items when they come due. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, because I think that that heightens the importance of this particular policy, right? That we have very clear understanding of what our fund balance is, what its uses can be, under what circumstances, and how it contributes to our contingency, because we don't have those other funds to go to. Now, because I've heard that from Mr. Shields, it doesn't mean that the conversation's over. I'll bring this back up with the mayor next time we talk, but I think that makes this more important. And with that, if there are no other questions, concerns, or issues, we'll call the vote.
Chair.
Mr. Castillo, please.
Just one question. I know we often talk about the budget versus the actual. Does it make any sense here to make that distinction with respect to the contingency, or is it basically a wash?
I don't know.
Now the language would make it the budget as opposed to the actual.
I'm not sure we care. I mean, I think the contingency goes in the budget, and as we use it during the course of the year, by the end of the year, it becomes the actual, but we set up a contingency fee in our budget. Mr. Campbell?
You pretty much stated that correctly, that, yeah, at the time that everything's set up, we only have the budgeted amount. We wouldn't know the actuals until probably about 15 months later.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. It's an excellent question. I appreciate it. Mr. Rastnik, could you have something?
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that part of the discussion from Wyatt in the sense that, okay, so the, I don't remember if it was a majority, or at least a goodly number of folks on council last summer were very concerned about our fund balance and where we were and how we needed to be spending from it and not having it, and now this fund is in no way going to be used for any of our needs. I'm sort of wondering if the 2 percent number is enough.
Well, so first, just let me clarify. Mr. Shields was not saying that that capital reserve could not be used for our needs. It could absolutely be used for things in the CIP that we need that are not funded, or to pay down bonds for things that are CIP items, right? So it is a fund that's accessible to us as well as the city. What it's not there for is to help us with this kind of, what we used to call the capital operating plan, right? Items that were more than $50,000 in more than a year that you could put in a section of the CIP that we just don't have anymore. So that's just a clarification, and I don't know, you know, how that responds to your question of is this enough or not, but just wanted to clear the capital reserve.
So, I mean, and I guess, that is my question, is with this new information, do you feel because authorizing up to 2 percent, I mean, is 2 percent enough? And, you know, that if we authorized up to say, let's say, 5 percent, it doesn't mean we have to go to that. I'm just, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a little concerned, especially considering if I understand it correctly, they basically, I'm not going to call it diverted, but directed that the surplus go into this new fund now, right? I mean...
The capital reserve fund?
Because they've basically met the policy limits on their previous contingency fund. They've created a new fund to put money into, and now they're going to use that money, as it sounds like, to pay down bond debt.
So, yes, so let me just see if I can clarify this, because I've been looking at this, and I think I understand it, and if I don't, then I have people here who can correct me. So, yeah, so on the city government side, they have a fund balance, which is currently at the target high of 17 percent of expenses, I believe.
Or as my dad would say, all filled up.
It's all filled up.
Okay.
Yes, it's absolutely, it's a full tank. The purpose of that, I believe, is it's a rainy day fund, right? Although we have commitment from Wyatt that he's going to send us a nice document that says what all the savings accounts are and what the policy is and when they can be used. But that's a rainy day fund, not to be used for pay-go, not to be used for CIP items or anything else. That's for if we get ourselves in a pickle, right, is what that is. There's this new capital reserve, and the capital reserve is meant to be funded $500,000 a year. This is the first year it would be funded, and that is for CIP items, right? Either paying down bonds or things that come up that need to be taken care of. The notion the city has is that they'll be adding $500,000 a year to that every year until it gets to 3.75 million dollars, right? And then now, so that fund will be available as a, I guess, an overflow valve in case we need things to be done. So that's my understanding, at least, of the purposes of those two things. Now, for us, for me, the 2 percent is a good number, because up to 2 percent, that really becomes our contingency for the year, and I think I'm very comfortable with that amount of contingency, $700,000 for a year. Now, you know, as time goes by, we can certainly change it if we see, but I'm very comfortable based on my experience on this board that that's fine. And anything above that is not being constrained from us, right? We have the right in the next year to use that for capital projects, immediate one-time needs. This sounds like those middle things, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the numbers are right.
And operational needs. So I'm, you know, other people on the board can certainly speak up if they don't agree, and I mean, this is up to the board to decide, but for me personally, I think 2 percent is fine. My concern, that I think a little bit of the challenge we had this summer was that there was a perception that our fund balance had gotten so large, that we had not managed it well, and I think 2 percent feels to me like it's just the right place to sit.
That answers my concerns.
Okay.
2 percent's fine with me.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
And Ms. Curtin, just to let you know, in terms of the sort of things that we've spent the contingency on in years past, 2 percent would be about $750,000. That would be, that would fund nine teaching positions, it would fund, or it could fund 21 paraprofessional positions, it could buy eight buses, or it could buy four fences around GM.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I make one comment, Susan?
Sure.
I guess, I hope I have, we have the problem of having a contingency of that size. We do not have that money right now in our contingency in the budget, so I want to make it really clear that this is a policy and a wish, if you will. It is not money that is going to pay for nine teachers right now.
No.
So I don't want to leave any misperception that it's magic money that just got found. There's no money there right now.
Right. No, this is purely a policy for managing into the future. We don't have it this minute. We don't have it in our budget request for next year, so it could be nothing. It could be nothing. Are there other concerns or questions or issues? If not, since we did have a motion in a second, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the first reading approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No, all right. Thanks very much. That completes that. The next item, 8.03, is an update on sequestration and legislation, and for this topic, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Sharp.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. The federal government is in the throes of its own budget concerns, and many on this board, except probably for Mr. Chaney, will recall, I think, that the board did pass a resolution last fall to say that we wanted to encourage the Congress and the president to find a path away from sequestration, and one that would preserve and, if possible, enhance the funding for public education from the federal level. That, of course, didn't occur as of January 1, when it was initially supposed to kick in. Things were delayed, and then also on March 1, sequestration became a sort of matter-of-fact, but it's a slow-moving train over the cliff, if you will. And there is an opportunity at the end of this month, near the end, anyway. March 27 is another sort of deadline when Congress needs to act to pass a continuing resolution funding the remainder of the fiscal year up to September 30. And there are efforts afoot to try to make a change in the sequestration as a consequence of passing a continuing resolution. And so I would just ask if our earlier action was support of the path away from sequestration as of January 1, we're now beyond that stage, and I just wanted to clarify, the board's still wanting to continue to ask for a resolution that's different than what the sequester would call for, and we want funding to continue. It's only, in our particular budget, about a $47,000 item for the fiscal year '14, but in many other schools, it's a much, much bigger... But in many other schools, it's a much, much bigger pot of money. And it can mean layoffs. It can mean programs not getting implemented. And it's still, you know, given the sensitivity even to our own budget and what we've been requesting and how many students we see coming to our doors every day, $47,000 can make a nice difference for us as well. So that's sort of the first question. Is the board comfortable with continuing to advocate for this path away from the sequestration?
Let me ask this. Is anybody opposed to that? Doesn't seem to, seems like people are happy about that.
The other point I'll just make is that I hope that the board's been able to receive the messages from VSB and NSBA as to what is happening in other areas. I do have one of the most recent NSBA emails here. It goes through a bill that the NSBA authored to try to clarify what the role of the Department of Education is versus local education agencies. And that's in the process, but won't have a real chance of action until somewhat later in the year. But anyway, I wanted to just ask if people are comfortable with the news they're getting here. And also, in April, I would suggest that we have a wrap-up report from our General Assembly this year, if possible. Lila is, has been away for a few days, perhaps a couple of weeks. Well-deserved time since the session closed. And I hope that she can come and visit with us. I hope that Jim Scott also, who is announcing his retirement from public service in the legislature, and that they can help us to understand what occurred in this past session and how we would need to adapt to it. And then there are some also things that we could catch up to on the federal level in April.
Okay.
If everybody's okay with that. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll put that on the agenda. And let's start early to see if we can get Delegate Scott to come here and to give us an update. And also, I think it would be entirely appropriate that at that time, this board recognize him for his support of the schools. He's just recently announced his retirement and won't be going back to Richmond. So let's work on it. Something very nice to do. He's been a terrific supporter of the schools his entire career down in Richmond. So thank you for that, Kieran, and appreciate the update. And we'll look forward to hearing more from you and Lila and Delegate Scott in April. All right, very good. Next is the superintendent's report.
Okay, and I'll be fairly quick. This Saturday, we do have our first community hearing on the budget with the city at the community center. And so we're looking forward to that. We also have two forums next week. On Monday, we have a joint PTA meeting with all of our PTAs coming together at MEH. And that's on budget and enrollment, and that will be at MEH starting at 7:30. We also, on Wednesday, have a forum with, that is being sponsored or hosted by the League of Women Voters. And that will actually be here in the chambers Wednesday at 7:30. And that's on budget and enrollment. And I believe Mr. Snyder from the city is actually going to be there to talk about plan development as well. So that should be a great forum. We also, tonight is kindergarten night, kind of that pre-enrollment night at Mount Daniel. It's real important that we go out and find all of our little kindies around the city. So if anybody has a neighbor that wasn't able to attend tonight, you know, please be sure to reach out to Mount Daniel and stop by and pick up a packet because we do want to get those pre-enrollment numbers in so we can be sure we're ready for them in September. We also, tomorrow night, if you need some entertainment, that's fast, that will be fabulous. It's the Pyramid Concert, and that will be again at MEH. And that's all of the choirs coming together. And of course, last year was my first year to enjoy it, but it's just beautiful. And so I encourage anybody to come to the Pyramid Concert. And then just a congratulations to our girls who were in the state tournament this last weekend. While they, you know, didn't win in the end, just, I think sometimes in Falls Church, and I was talking to Mr. Bird about this, we forget how hard it is to be so awesome, you know? We were so proud of them, and it was a great game, and just really, really enjoyed being there. And we're proud of all of them. So that's all from me tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones. Moving right along this evening, next will be comments from the board and student liaison. And Ms. Carney, I'll start with you this evening.
I would just like to congratulate the girls as well. That was definitely a wonderful season, and we're so very proud of them. And all the students definitely enjoyed going out and supporting them on Friday. And then also, just to add on, this upcoming Friday at 7:00 PM at the high school, there's the Mr. and Miss Mason competition, which is a talent competition that, for the crowning of Mr. and Miss Mason, which are students who represent the school and everything we stand for in Falls Church. So that will be coming up on Friday. And I don't have anything else to add, except, you know, spring sports are going on right now. So there'll be plenty of games and opportunities for you guys to go out and support all the students.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chaney, let's start on this end tonight. All right, thank you.
So I just had one thing I wanted to specifically recognize. The efforts, I know that all the girls were a team and they did a great job. But I did want to at least recognize one of our finest players in history, who actually not only conquered the 2,000-point mark, but went over the 2,100-point mark, I understand, in her final game, scoring 33 points in the semifinal against Floyd? Yeah, Floyd County. And that's Stephanie Chaney, who I think her finest accomplishment is not the stellar athletic career she had, but the fact that she's going to be moving on to the Ivy League after this. And so this whole community should be proud of her. The school board should be proud of her, and the man in my left. Di is should be especially proud of her.
I think he is.
Great career. Thanks, Stephanie Chaney.
All right. Sharp?
I was also going to mention the Pyramid Concert. I'll be there to watch the center, in particular, all of them, of course. But, yeah, that is, I've been to many of them, and they're really, really exciting and fun. I went to the boosters meeting last night. And just wanted to remind everybody, the mulch sale is Saturday, April 6 this year. You can place your orders online through the Mason Athletics website. You just go to the boosters tab, and there's a place where you can purchase your mulch. And it'll be delivered by smiling George Mason Athletes on that morning. And, yeah, the spring sports have begun, so that was the main topic of conversation last night. So get out and support your Mustangs. Thanks.
All right, thanks very much. Mr. Casilla?
Thank you. Last night, I was at the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee meeting over at MEH. And they had a joint meeting with the ESOL Advisory Board, and it was extraordinarily packed. I was glad to see two new student representatives there. Very enthusiastic discussion, a lot of interest in the matrix that is used to select kids for identification into the screening pool. Some talk about moving up the ultimate decision for putting kids into TAP, not just having a screening pool, maybe doing that in the second grade. I would note to the community, anybody out there interested in serving on the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee, there are two slots open. I will be at the Pyramid Concert also tomorrow. And I'm on the fence about going to the Mr. and Miss Mason event. Not sure how the rehearsals in our house are going.
Oops.
I would also note, there was a fascinating report that's just come out today that I haven't read in full from the Center for Green Schools, talking in general about the state of K through 12 infrastructure in the United States. And it's hundreds of billions of dollars in work that needs to be done. So we are not alone, and it is a big problem. And I think we do need to think of it as critical infrastructure. And that's all for me.
All right, thanks very much. Mr. Sharp?
Last evening, I was at the Fairfax Partnership for Youth board meeting. And we mainly reviewed the strategic plan that began last fall and is still coming to a conclusion with that group. But I anticipate that they'll be wrapping up a strategic plan that will then result in a short and longer-term strategic set of things to do very soon, and certainly by the beginning of the opening of the new fiscal year. One of the things that's happening currently, pardon me, is that the executive director there, Kristin Brennan, has been offered the opportunity to have a TV show with teenagers, with students. It will be on the Fairfax County Schools cable channel. And students from City of Falls Church would be eligible to make appearances on that, on that show if they find it interesting. So if you want to get some details about that, just, I'll chat with anyone who's interested. It's a half-hour program, and I think it's going to be a weekly, beginning later in April. I also at least caught some of the message from this morning's chamber board meeting. I wasn't able to attend myself, but I did, I did call and talk to someone who was there. And the chamber did have a number of legislative matters that they were concerned with, mostly on the city's side. But they did express some lack of understanding of some of the things that were announced regarding the school budget versus the city budget. And there were some things that seemed to be not clarified as to which side they were on. And, you know, to the extent that we can come up with a clarification of where those things are, I think it would be helpful to have a couple of sentences, paragraphs, whatever's required. And I'd welcome the chance to get that to our chamber members. They have some, they've generally been very, very supportive of the schools. And I think it's just a request that they want to understand what the new landscape looks like. Thanks very much.
All right, thanks. Yeah, just for everybody's knowledge, there was some lack of clarity about that during the budget presentations last night. And I did ask Dr. Jones to come up with something brief and quite clear. We can provide that to the chamber. We can use it as a Q and A on our morning announcements in the way we've done other things. And so I think you're exactly right. A bunch of clarity needs to be found around that. Yes?
Really, just want to say thank you for going to council last night. As if six weeks of doing the budget with us wasn't enough fun, you got to kick that off as well. And you really, I couldn't be there, but I watched, and you really did a good job. And I was surprised, honestly, that it was so short and relatively sweet, so.
Thank you. We tried to keep it short, high-level, sweet, and clear because we think our messages this year are really clear. We need a big spending increase because we've had a big increase in students and not a concomitant increase in spending. But we'll have lots of time to talk about that. In addition to the budget sessions that Dr. Jones mentioned, this Thursday night, there is a session, a joint session of city council and the school board. It'll be held over in the Dogwood Room or down in the Dogwood Room at 7:30. And the agenda for that is really a fresh or a very current look at the city's finances overall. And so for those of you in the community who haven't, weren't here with us last November or who would like to understand kind of what's going on in the city with its finances at a high level and how that may affect our budget, both operating and CIP, I'd suggest you might want to attend that. And we do have a bit of a sprint, having made our recommendation in that we, every other night for the next week, we'll be doing something budget-related. With this meeting tonight, we have a meeting Thursday night. We have a town hall Saturday. And then on Monday evening, we have the PTA thing. And then on Wednesday, the League of Women Voters thing. And so we do have a lot of things coming up. I really encourage the community to come to one or many of those. We very much want you to understand what's going on in the schools, what our request is, why we think it's important. We want to hear your questions. We want to answer your questions, so please come out. I have to say that the PTA meeting on Monday night is not very popular, however, in my home as that's my daughter's birthday. And for some reason, she expected I would be with her. However, I will buy her lunch, and she will probably... I offered she could come with me, but she wasn't very enthusiastic about that. The city council, Wyatt Shields did present his budget recommendation last night at city council meeting and is available publicly now. So if you don't know what that is, look for that online for the community as well. And that, those are my comments. Past that, we have no minutes this evening. The materials for board review consists of the letter that Dr. Jones was kind enough to work with me on that we sent to Wyatt Shields to let him know of our budget recommendation, so it's there. There is a piece of work which I think Dr. Jones and Mr. Raznick are working on, you know, around the notion we have that there are resources other than next year's forecast revenue to help fund budgets. And so if the two of you would, you know, have that ready. I know there are some questions about that. Is there, are any other comments, issues, questions? If not, we'll adjourn for the evening. All right, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.